1,976th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. Tonight, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance offered and led by Councilman Brandon McCullough. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Tonight's meeting will be a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved on Monday, September 18th, at the next regular meeting. Ms. Nash, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre? I'm sorry. Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have six present at the moment. I suspect we will have our seventh join us soon. At this time, I will entertain a motion in regards to the meeting minutes of August 21st of 2023.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion by Donavick, support by McCullough. Are there any additions or comments on the minutes from the council? I see none. Are there any additions or comments on the minutes from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. At this time, the council has set aside 30 minutes for communication from the audience on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Is there any member of the audience who would like to address the council at this time? Good evening. You are limited to three minutes per the council rules. Can you tell us your name and address, please?
Carrie Buzinski, 9345 California Street, Livonia. I am here tonight on behalf of the Library Commission to share with you all that the One City One Book Program launches its third year tomorrow. This year's selection is the book, or The Book Woman of Troublesome Creek by Kim Michelle Richardson. It is a book about the packhorse librarians in 1930s. It's a novel. It's a really easy, interesting read. The author will be joining us tomorrow evening virtually at the Civic Center at 7:00 for a book talk. So we encourage everyone to attend. We'll have programs. We kick off tomorrow. We'll end on October 24th at the Library Commission doing a book discussion. In between, there are storytimes for kids, book clubs for...
Can I pause you for one minute, Ms. Buzinski? To our Livonia television staff, we've received word that there is no audio on the television broadcast. So I don't know if something has to be switched on back there, but just to give you a heads up. We're not going to wait, though, Ms. Buzinski. Please continue.
So for teens, adults, all different kinds of programming, from food preservation to history, the D.A.G.O. Rivera mural, a lot of cool things. We hope you'll check it out. I have brought books for everyone here on council, a flyer for y'all as well. So please share it on your social media accounts. Let's get the word out and have another successful year.
Thank you very much. I'll read Mr. McCullough the first chapter. But we'll make a sign up for any chapters after that.
I'll read the pictures.
All right. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please?
Good evening, council. Paul Condon, 31115 Hillbrook in Livonia here. And I wanted to speak tonight. As you know, I've been a little bit involved with the St. Mary's Noise issue that we had and their festival recently, or not recently. But I just wanted to preface my remarks with a comment that these are my opinions only. They do not represent my neighbors or anyone else that I can attribute them to. As you know, St. Mary's requested and was granted a waiver on the time that they should shut down as opposed to, as it relates to that ordinance, the noise ordinance. And you also know that on the May 22nd meeting, which they were approved, they made several promises, things that they were going to do. One, they were going to monitor, purchase decibel meters and monitor the noise level from their property lines. They were going to face the speakers in other direction. And they were going to adhere to the time to shut down at midnight and 11:00, I think it was, on Friday. And I wanted to come back here just to say they did those things. And I was very pleased that they did do that. They did purchase the decibel meters. They even contacted me a few days before and asked me to come over to the church so that I could just get a handle on how they have to use them and what they would actually be doing. And a couple other things here. They, I did drop by several times during the, during the event on Friday night and Saturday night, unannounced. And they had, you know, they had their security crew was out at the perimeter of their property and checking the decibel levels. They actually, on Saturday night, or Friday night, excuse me, Habib and Wasi, the gentlemen at St. Mary's that are in charge of the festival, came over to my house. And I stood in my backyard, which is about 600 feet away from the, from the venue. And we checked it and checked the download on an app on my phone, and we're getting very similar readings. So just a couple of them that I thought I would run by you, just to let you know. I took about 10 readings, and during the music portion, the decibels were rating averaging between 50 to 75 decibels. The high point was about 92, which was maybe once or twice. But the majority were in the 75 to 85 reading. So was the music loud? Yes. Was it unbearable? Absolutely not. Did my windows rattle this year? No, they did not. So I think I have to agree with Councilman McCullough. On May 22nd, made the comment that the bass levels are, of course, very, very difficult to quantify and to measure, and they are. The Wafi and Habib tried to get that lowered, but I think the nature of the music doesn't lend itself to have that bass monitored or reduced that much. So all in all, it was a much better, much better event from my perspective. And I wanted to thank them for, publicly, for doing what they said they were going to do. And also to thank the council for watching over it. And you set some parameters, and you followed them, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Condon.
Thank you.
This has been going on for a few years. I know you've been involved since the beginning, so we appreciate your efforts, as I'm sure your neighbors do as well.
Let's hope they can figure out a way to control the bass next time.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Your name and address, please, sir?
Good evening. My name is Stephen Ray, 31041 Six Mile Road. I wanted to share with you a pleasant experience. I'm one of your newest residents, having moved to Livonia about six weeks ago. And on my first visit to City Hall, I was happily surprised to see this big "Be Kind" motto out in front on the sign. Because "be kind" has always been one of my mantras. And I must say, the people I interacted with here at City Hall have lived up to it. Specifically, the building department and the assessors office, and even the officer at the entrance desk. They were just all so nice. I was really blown away. With that, and the wonderful neighbors I've met so far, I feel very welcomed to the city, and I'm so glad I moved here. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's what we like to hear, and we're glad that you're making yourself at home. Thank you. Is there anybody else for audience communication prior to the meeting? Beginning formally? I see none. We will close audience communication at this time. We will go to any announcements, comments, or motions from the council? Mr. Barr?
First of all, I'd like to wish my youngest son a happy 13th birthday today. For the next three months, my wife and I have four teenagers. In three months, my daughter will turn 20, so it's a brief phase for us. But the other thing I just want to say is after those two comments, Mr. Condon and Mr. Ray, I believe it was, you know, I often comment that probably 90% of the time you hear from residents is when they're upset in this position. That's just, it's not a criticism, it's just the nature of things. It's really, really cool when people take the time to come and say stuff like that. Thanks for blessing with us, blessing us with that tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. I always try to keep everybody up to date with current events that are going to be happening in the city. Mark your calendar for September 17th. We've got the Tour de Livonia, the second. Second time we've done this. Last year, it was a big success. There, the signups, I think we've got a couple more days before you lose an opportunity to get a cool t-shirt. But if you go to livoniacidsandfamilies.org, you can sign up. I think you're good for the next couple of days, and then there will be some signups. I think the day of the event as well. If you haven't done it and you're looking for a good time, there's a family course, and then there's one that goes around, I think it's 18 miles, and it starts at 9:00 a.m. And then later that day is our corn roast. And that's going to be going from 11:30 to 3:30. Information is all over, pretty much all over social media. I think everybody's sharing. I think the city grabbed a hold of it. That's a great time to get out and just learn about service groups that support our city. And hopefully, we just need to make sure the weather looks good that day. This Sunday, for all you hockey fanatics out there, we're, the Livonia Hockey Association has Try Hockey for Free Day. If you know anybody that's looking to get in, it's, the ages are, I think it's under seven. It's 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 at Eddie Edgar Ice Arena. Again, get into the game, learn how to play some hockey, and have some fun. Thank you.
Is there anything else from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
First, some official business. We'd like to wish a very happy retirement to Brian Love, Senior Police Sergeant, who retired on the 19th of August after 27 years and six months of exemplary service to the Livonia Police Department. We wish Sergeant Love a wonderful, long, happy, and healthy retirement, and thank him for his exceptional service. I also wanted to, on behalf of two troops in this city, BSA Troops 1382, which is a boys' troop, and Troop 1841, which is a girls' troop out of St. Priscilla. One of their leaders, Rich Ryan, I've had opportunities to talk to him. They're a very active troop, and he's going to come and make a presentation to us. He couldn't be here this evening, but I wanted to let you know about these two outstanding troops. So again, it's 1382, which is the boys' troop, and 1841, or 1481, which is the girls' troop out of St. Priscilla. And then finally, in July, we had a resident, Karen Turan, come and talk to us about her son and the challenges that he has. He has some special needs in finding activities and recreational activities and social activities in Livonia. And she talked about the kindness club that she and he have started with some other people. In perusing our recreational opportunities and our magazine, we just appeared to have very little, and I did not see any, maybe I'm missing them, any sorts of classes for children or young adults or adults who have different sorts of challenges. So I would like to offer a resolution that we put this matter of looking at ways that we could add some programs and recreational opportunities and social opportunities to our very robust offerings in the city, and would like to put that into the families, health, and senior citizens, I think is the right statement.
Support.
Any other comments in regards to that motion from the council? Any comments on that motion from the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye.
The matter passes. Will be placed into the Committee of Families, Senior Citizens, etc.
Yes, thank you.
The names change from time to time.
They do change.
Does that conclude your remarks?
That does. Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I will note that we were contacted as a council by Brian Galdes, who requested to give us a presentation and give the community a presentation in regards to suicide prevention. Understanding that the meetings are tight on time, but that this is a very important topic, we did invite Mr. Galdes, and I'm probably mispronouncing that, to give a presentation to us here. I think I've asked him to limit it to five minutes. So, Mr. Galdes, please introduce yourself, and the floor is yours for approximately five minutes. And we appreciate you being here up front.
Thank you. My name is Brian Galdes, and I am from Growth Works. I am the Suicide Prevention Coordinator. And for some reason, my presentation, which was showing earlier, isn't. So I apologize for that.
If you want to take a moment to try and figure it out, you're more than welcome to.
There we go. Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to present to the council tonight. Again, we... I'm representing a coalition of school districts, seven school districts, as well as two hospitals, St. Mary's, now Trinity Health, and also Botzford, which is now Corwell Health, as well as seven school districts. And we're dedicated to attacking and battling adolescent depression and suicide. So the school districts that are involved in this, our Livonia is very, very involved in this, Plymouth Canton, Northville, South Redford, Wayne Westland Schools, Garden City Schools, and Redford Union Schools. And those are the districts that kind of encompass St. Mary's Hospital or Trinity Health. We also have some service agencies, and some of those are listed up on the screen. Livonia Save Our Youth has been very, very supportive of the work we do as we're moving forward. So just some statistics about mental health and suicide as it pertains to adolescents. And some of you may know this, and some of you may be very shocked by this information. It's the second leading cause of death for ages 10 through 14. The first leading cause of death is accidents. One youth suicide every 80 minutes in the U.S. One adolescent attempts suicide every 50 seconds in the U.S. And the statistics that really drive my passion for this, and I think really surprise people the most, and really kind of brings it home to our own community, is the Center for Disease Control in December put out some new research that they just did. And they do a survey called a Youth Behavior Survey, Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And if you look at the national and state numbers, percentages for that research, now, these aren't Livonia-specific, but these numbers hold pretty well across the country. And in Wayne County, we do a similar survey, and our numbers are almost exactly the same in terms of percentages. And so students in Livonia, there's about 4,500 high school students in Livonia. Students in Livonia who have said in the last 12 months that they have felt sad or hopeless, 40% of them have. And when you take that, those numbers, extrapolate them to the state number, which is 40%, that's 1,818 students in the last 12 months in high school that are sitting in our classes have said they have felt sad or hopeless. 22% of students across the country, again, extrapolate those numbers to Livonia, 4,500 youth, or high schoolers, 999 Livonia High School students considered taking their lives. 17% made a plan. That's 792 Livonia High School students in the last 12 months. And the one that really, really is unacceptable is 9% of the students, that's 405 Livonia High School students, have made an attempt to take their life. Not planned, not considered it, but actually made an attempt. And these numbers, again, hold across Wayne County as well as the country. So seven years ago, we asked ourselves this question. What, how can we make a difference? What can we do to change these numbers? And so I was working with St. Mary's Health, St. Mary's Hospital at the time, on some of their goals and their strategic plans. And so I was very involved in the adolescent part because I was a superintendent in South Redford Schools at the time. And we began a program called Begin the Conversation. We called it that because no one is talking about mental health, and no one is talking about suicide. And that's the stigma part that really kind of gets in the way of us getting, making a difference. And so the coalition was created. I mentioned the seven school districts. We represent about 66,000 students in Western Wayne County. Our steering committee is made up of one decision-making, cabinet-level administrator from each district, and one person who's boots on the ground, working with kids on a daily basis. So each district has two representatives, administrator and someone who's working with kids right now. And then two representatives from each hospital are also on the committee. We have working groups that explore issues that the steering teams, the steering committee would bring up, and then bring their results back to the steering committee, and then back to the school districts. So work that we've already accomplished. We've established a region-wide coordinated adolescent mental health initiative. We've established a leadership team for the coalition. I just talked about that. We've trained suicide awareness trainers in each school district. So all seven school districts have trainers within their district that can train others. We provided suicide awareness training for over 5,000 adults in those seven school districts. That includes teachers, bus drivers, custodians, kitchen workers, everybody, teachers and administrators, obviously. We provided community awareness through different events that we've had to try to break the stigma of mental health. And so we're also working with local legislators. Senator Kavanaugh toured Churchill High School's mental health space, and the mental health workers, the professional mental health workers, got to sit down with her for about two hours and had some really good dialogue about the things that schools are faced and challenged with in terms of adolescent mental health. We have a presence at the Governor's Commission on Suicide and the Governor's Commission on School Safety and Suicide. We also provide professional development. Last year, we put a conference on for 230 Coalition Mental Health Care Professionals from the schools. We also, through Trinity Health, are also doing ongoing mini-conferences throughout the school year. We selected a common screener to identify kids in crisis. That was a big step for us. And so seven, seven school districts and the hospitals are all using the same screener. And we plan to train all high school students in those seven school districts in suicide awareness. And so that will make a difference. So that is my presentation for tonight. If you have any questions, I would certainly entertain them.
Thank you, Mr. Galdes. You have a captive audience here in this auditorium, but hopefully, there's a lot more people watching at home as well. Ms. Toy has a question?
If I may, to Brian. Brian, excellent job. You're the guy for it. When I was in the Michigan Senate, you and I spoke a great deal. And out of those seven areas, I serviced for them. And you could, you could feel different things that were going on in our schools, and you were one of the leaders. And so Growth Works is very, really very honored, if you will, to have you there because your skill sets are such that you've been there, done that, and you've experienced things, and very few can say that at times. So congratulations. I was wondering if you are working at all with our police department and/or our fire department because they see so much on their jobs. And as you know, we've hired some special people to go out and break up, not break up marriages, but try to help them. Sorry, that was the wrong verse, doesn't use on that. But just wondered if there's been any plugins there, and if so, what kind of success or whatever have you had?
No, my focus and our focus with the coalition is strictly adolescents.
Just, yeah.
In the schools, yeah. But I will tell you that first responders, suicide rates are as shocking as these.
That's why I wondered if indeed you plug into them to know those kinds of things that are going on, if there's certain areas or certain school systems or whatever within our community that we could identify. And, you know, the cause and effect, but that's a deeper subject for another day. But thank you.
It is, and when I'm in Lansing with the Governor's Suicide Commission, there are representatives from all of those different groups, veteran groups, first responders and that. So that conversation is definitely happening.
Good, good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. And I'm sure that implicit in your work is trying to understand how this crisis was exacerbated by the situation with children not being in school for a very, very extended period of time. And as we know, many of those kids, especially adolescents, were left to their own devices, which meant social media, which meant isolation. And, you know, I don't know how you distill those things or pull those things out, but I'm assuming that part of your challenge is looking at how we get kids back on track after that period of terrible isolation and no school. And it's an ongoing issue because I'm sure you're aware with your work that school attendance is down about 10% from pre, you know, pre-COVID to the new normal. That's a significant number of kids every day that aren't in school, getting not just education, but social interaction and everything else. And then my other question is, how will you, how will you measure progress? Will it be in a reduction in the number of kids in Livonia that are considering self-harm or that report feeling hopeless?
Boy, you hit a lot of nails right there, and you're absolutely right. COVID certainly hit us hard. I had the pleasure of being a school superintendent.
I know you did.
Yeah, during COVID. And it was heartbreaking to not have kids in schools when they were, when they were out. And it was really, we really sought the year when they came back, you know, for a whole school year. And so, yeah, that had a huge impact. Social media has incredible impact. Now, a lot of people talk about bullying and those kinds of things. You know, it's difficult for kids. They, it's, kids are subjected to that kind of treatment 24/7 and anonymously. And it's associated, if I could do anything to change what's going on, I would pull the plug on social media for kids. It's, it is, it's very difficult, but something that we have to deal with, and they deal with them in the schools every day. And so the coalition that I work with, those, the people that I said are on that steering team committee are really the best of the best in Western Wayne County. You would be so impressed to see the people that are there. And we are going to make strides. We are going to make a difference. How do we know, I mean, how do we measure that? You asked that question. We will be measuring. We have a subcommittee that's working on that very question. How do we, as a seven school districts, how do we, how do we get the data that we need to be able to make good measurements to see if we're making progress? And what programs are working and what programs aren't? So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well, like I said, we really appreciate you coming out tonight and giving us this information. Although we are not your primary focus, if there is an opportunity for training or something of the like that would fit us and that we would be somehow adding value to participate in, please let us know.
Sure, absolutely. You know, I actually offer up my services to any of the communities that we serve, even if it's not necessarily adolescents. If we can do training, I'm a trainer in QPR, which is a suicide awareness training. I would be happy to provide services for you. We're really, we're not going to be able to do this just as a schools, a school system. It's really going to take everyone. It's going to take the chamber. It's going to take city councils. It's going to take churches. We're really going to have to come together, and that's really our long-term goal. So I will, I will, you know, offer back. If there's anything I can do for you, let me know. I'd like to be involved.
Well, I would hope in the near future, we can coordinate with the mayor's office and possibly have some training for the council and the larger city employee staff. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
You too, sir. At this time, I'll go to Ms. Toy, who has a motion.
Yes. She'd like to offer.
Thank you, council, or thank you, Mr. President and council. There was a communication to our President Jolly from the mayor in regards to the senior wellness building or center adjacent proposal to the Curtsy Rec Center. There's some very important information and an opportunity where we could meet, hopefully, in committee. So that would be my motion, so that we can get that budget update and identify the next steps necessary for such movement. Thank you.
Just, we have support from Mr. Donavick. By way of clarification, is that for the committee or the whole?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Is there any comment from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've had the pleasure of being at a few of these meetings with our architect and various city staff from DPW and Parks and Rec and the senior center. There's a whole working group there that's been diligently working on the plan. There's a whole working group there that's been diligently working on the plans for months now. And I think it's going to be a really great plan, not only for our senior center, senior residents right now and our employees at the senior center and just overall us as a city. I think it's made a great plan for our future as a city. When you look at what we want to do in some of our focal areas in our community, one of the first steps is relocating our senior center. And after we do that, as the administration is calling this project, Project Catalyst, it really is the catalyst to redeveloping our city square so that we can get a new police department, so our police officers can have the most up-to-date and modern building and technology and equipment they need, so we can have maybe a new city hall that actually has working air conditioning that this building currently does not have. So there's a lot of different things that are going to come from this project. And unfortunately, government moves very slow. It moves very expensive and there's a lot of red tape. But, you know, maybe 10, 15 years from now, we can have some really, really exciting projects and it all starts right here with this building. So looking forward to this move forward and council getting more involved and figuring out how we're going to pay for this. I know there's some creative financing options out there and looking forward to this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. If there's nothing else from the council, is there anything from the audience in regards to the motion to committee of the whole? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. That matter will be called out in the near future. By way of my announcements, I'd like to wish my wife a happy birthday and a happy anniversary. Happy birthday, Katie. And we will move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. First up, we have Mayor Brosnan here with a very important introduction of our new director of the library. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, council. Boy, you sure covered a lot of ground in your opening section of your meeting here. I do want to just pause for a moment and thank Brian Galvez for coming in. My office had a chance to meet with Brian and connect him with the Conference of Western Wayne as well. One of his first requests was to meet with city councils. So we were the first community to entertain that request and I want to thank you for affording him the time and the opportunity to address you this evening. We also are, just so that you know, making a full court press to have Clarenceville included in the schools that are served by that coalition as well. As you may have noticed, currently Livonia Public Schools is well represented. We want to make sure that Clarenceville is represented there too. Secondarily, you had, you mentioned putting into one of the committees the issue of programming for mentally challenged in our community. Just, and we will provide this in a report to you for the council, but we do participate with Canton in a leisure services program that is specific to inclusion recreation. And this is a way of taking a small amount of money that we get from the state of Michigan where we couldn't operate our own program, combining it with the work that Canton is doing. And as a result, through the Canton Recreation Services, they offer the opportunity for residents from Livonia as well as Canton to participate in these programs. They're highly sought effort, amazingly well represented, and we, we, we are a significant portion of that program. So we'll be sure to give you a report on exactly what's contained in that and what services are available. Where I think we may be missing the mark, though, is that if you didn't know that they existed, then we're not promoting the connection with that program well enough. So we'll take a look at that.
Great.
And then third, you had the chance to hear from our library president, our library commission president, Kiri Buzinski. Unfortunately, she got cut off because the sound wasn't working, but she was talking about the One City One Book Program. And so I'm going to let our library director dive in a little bit more on what that program is so that those who are viewing maybe don't miss all of the good news coming out of that. But before I do that, I do have the pleasure tonight of introducing you to Kristin Edson. Kristin is the new director of our library. She started in her role just last week, August 30th, and she comes with five years of experience as the deputy director of the library in East Baton Rouge. That's a library that has 15 libraries in its system. Prior to that, she spent two years in the Bossier Parish Libraries in Louisiana as well. And prior to that, 11 years in the Chicago Public Library. Now, she is a Michigan native. For those of you who may think she knows nothing about Michigan, she is a graduate of Grand Valley University and has her master's degree from Wayne State University. So we are especially excited to welcome Kristin home and we're especially excited to see her in this new role. One of Kristin's strengths and one of the reasons why she was selected is that she has taken on a number of these long-range strategic planning processes. And as you all are aware, and I am grateful to the council for doing this, you've appropriated funding for a long-range strategic plan for our library. Kristin has wasted absolutely no time at all. And earlier this week, we met with Library IQ, the contractor that you had all approved. So I'm again going to let her address that issue and fill you in on where things are with that. But with that, I wish to introduce to you Kristin Edson, our new library director.
Good evening. Thank you so much for taking the time to have me here today. I'm sure that you all are grateful to have me here, but not nearly as much as my mother. I'm only an hour away versus 17 and a half, so that's a big improvement for her. So I, I'm very grateful to be here. I'm looking forward to diving in, as the mayor said, in, into this strategic planning initiative with Library IQ. We will be having additional meetings to kind of square we, team members so that we have a steering committee. And I've already reached out to a few of my counterparts and there's a long list of those people that I need to connect with. So if you haven't heard from me yet, you'll hear from me in the very near future. But we will be doing extensive input sessions, a survey for the community focus groups with the community, key stakeholders, other department heads, and then of course, the library staff. And we're really looking forward to seeing what the community wants and needs from its library system so that we can provide that and be responsive and not just reactive to their needs. The One Book, or, excuse me, One City, One Book, I'm used to One Book, One Community. So the offerings are starting off tomorrow evening at the Civic Center at 7:00 PM in the auditorium with a virtual session with the author, which is Kim Michelle Richards. And again, the, the title of that book is The Book Woman of Troublesome Creek. And it will culminate in a book reading with the library commission on October 24th. In between then, there are several other programmatic opportunities. They put together a lovely little pamphlet that you can look at either in print or you can get it online or on our online calendar if you would like to be a part of that programming. But the whole idea behind One, One City, One Book across the country is to bring people together, to have a discussion on a similar topic, learn together and, and create dialogue and connection, which is so important for the members of our community. And I look forward to reaching out to you all soon and anytime you have a question, don't hesitate to reach out. And I really appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much and welcome.
Welcome.
We're very happy to have you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we will get to our items listed on the agenda. We'll start with reports received from the mayor and other city officials. A communication from the Department of Finance dated August 8th of 2023 forwarding the departmental purchase reports for the month ending in July 31, 2023. And a communication from the Department of Finance dated August 8th of 2023 forwarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending on the date of June 30th, 2023. With that said, we are now at the consent agenda tonight. That's items one through seven. These items were previously studied at the council study session on August 21st of 2023 and found to require no additional study and will be voted on as a single item. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Some support.
We have a, an approving motion from Vice President Toy. I believe support from Mr. Donavick. Is that correct? Are there any comments from the audience in regards to the consent agenda, items one through seven? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on the consent agenda.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes. We will move on to unfinished business. Tonight, that starts with item number eight. This is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance, or excuse me, the Livonia Zoning Ordinance, as amended from the Department of Law pursuant to petition 2023040103 submitted by Michael Morad requesting to rezone the property at 20180 Westmore Street located on the east side of Westmore between Farmington and Shady Side in the northwest quarter of Section 3 from N2 Neighborhood to RUF Rural Urban Farm. A first reading was provided by Vice President Toy on August 21st of 2023. Ms. Toy?
I'll give that second reading. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's up for a first read tonight.
Oh, it is? Okay, I'll give a first read.
He was asked to, to create the language for the ordinance.
Sorry, I'll give a first reading. I get my ones and twos mixed up.
The, the attorney notes indicate that a first reading was given on August 21st. That's why I read that off the, I'm just telling you. My confusion is somewhat grounded in my ability to read. So Ms. Toy, you'll offer the first reading tonight, is that correct?
I will indeed, sure.
Okay. Are there any comments from the council or from the audience on item number nine? Seeing none, we will move on to item number 10. That is a roll call, a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, brought to us by Councilmember Brandon McCullough and the Tree Committee to add Section 015, 045, and 055.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I hate to interrupt you, but eight was the one that we needed the first reading on where there was one. Nine, there was one previously, so.
So my mistake, I apologize.
So, so we need a first reading for eight and then a second reading for nine.
I.
Do you want?
No, I apologize.
No, that's all right.
This is, I, I think I'm getting confused by the highlighting on the document here and that's my own confusion here, but there's, I'm not sure. Okay, I apologize. Okay. So at this time, Ms. Toy, you have offered a first reading in regards to item number eight, is that correct?
It's correct, yes.
Okay, I apologize. We'll go on to item number nine.
That's a.
That is a roll call for, okay, for the proposed, proposed amendment to the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended from the Department of Law, petition 2023050104 submitted by Colossal Development Group LLC requesting to rezone the properties at 20511, 20513, and 20515 Angling Road located on the southwest corner of Angling and Eight Mile Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 1 from C1 Local Business to N1 Neighborhood. A first reading on that was provided by Vice President Toy on August 21st. My bad.
Mr. President?
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Donavick?
I'd like to recuse myself. I have a work conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. As Mr. Donavick walks away from the dais, we'll go to Vice President Toy.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to give a second reading. I'd like to say, though, this is, this is an excellent opportunity to regain some newer homes in that older section and I think it'll be a welcome addition.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the council on this item? Are there any audience comments on item number nine? If there are not, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. So item number nine passes in this. The amendment to the zoning ordinance will become effective upon publication in the newspaper. Item number 10 is a roll call for the proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from Councilman Brandon McCullough and the Tree Committee to add Section 015, 045, 055, and to amend Section 020, 040, and 050 to Title 12, Chapter 24, dealing with trees and shrubs. A first reading was given by Councilmember McCullough on that matter on August 21st of 2023. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. I'd be happy to offer a second read. This is the tree ordinance. I know we've discussed it in detail between the Tree Committee and then council over the last few meetings. One thing I just wanted to touch base on is, you know, this is some talking points from the DNR. A tree ordinance can provide a community with the following benefits. One, enhance community's beauty, reduce air pollution, lower air conditioning costs, increase biodiversity, provide legal authority for conducting forestry programs, define municipal responsibility for public and private trees. And the other one I'd like, reduce air and noise pollution and then overall just increasing our canopy. Again, the Tree Committee worked diligently and with Mr. Moore and his team, a lot of time and effort had won into this and getting to this point. Hope all is well and it passes and we can get something on the books. This is a long time coming and kudos to everybody involved. I'll, I'll save the Grammys or the, the award show speech so I don't get kicked off, but everybody out there that we talked about during the study, kudos again. So thanks to, to my colleagues and hopefully we're good to go.
Thank you. Is there any other comment from the council in regards to item number 10?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Vice President Toy?
I think the observation from my colleague McCullough is, is very good. For the amount of years I've been on this, I, I applaud him and the administration for working so diligently and hard and involving citizens on this. And it's an awesome kind of thing and many tree houses would be built in those trees, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice President. If there is nothing from the council, is there anything from the audience in regards to item number 10? Good evening, sir. Please tell us your name and address.
My name is Thomas Earl. I'm at 31545 Penbrook Street. And when I first came here, my subdivision was totally transformed one day when the city went out and spent a crew that did a wonderful job of trimming the trees. I mean, it was excellent. However, I tried to get a tree trimmed last year in June. They told me it would be about two to three months. Two or three months went and now it's October, six months, almost six months after I have requested it. And I could not get my tree trimmed until this last spring, which I appreciated. They had independent people come out and do it and they did an excellent job. However, my subdivision suffered a tree disease a few years ago, a couple decades actually. And it took a long time for the trees to finally get planted and grow to the height where they actually need to be trimmed. Now, we were told that you couldn't, certain varieties could not be planted. Well, those varieties like crab apple trees and things that bear big fruit and stuff are now in our subdivision. And when you walk around your subdivision, you find that the trees, in some cases, are about to here. It needs trimming. Suckers are growing off the bottom of the trees, et cetera. Now, I don't know what your particular plans are to take care of that. I do know it's expensive. But if you're going to plant trees and require, you shouldn't, it shouldn't be a, a misdemeanor for me to cut my own tree. So I think you should make it easy for the people.
Thank you, Mr. Earl.
To trim their own trees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, if there's nothing else from the audience, Mr. Barr?
Just wanted to respond to what Mr. Earl said and perhaps you, I know, Mr. Earl in particular, I know you pay attention to these meetings, so maybe what I'm about to tell you, you saw in the last meeting, but I had similar questions, similar concerns. This is one of those things of, of all the things I've learned about law in my time on council. Give Mr. Byrne your a chance to smile. The reality is that there's no change on this point as far as what has always been the case. The way our ordinance works is it's, it's actually always been a misdemeanor. But what I'm told is that in the entire history of the city, we're actually not aware, we're not aware of a single time that anybody's ever been charged with one. You and I both know that we have responsible homeowners in the city who are doing some light trimming on the trees over their sidewalk. So there's a, there's a reasonableness factor to this that in practicality, it's not like we're going around issuing misdemeanors to people for trimming their trees, but it's, it's provides the city a legal means and the prosecutor a legal means if it were necessary if someone were to do significant damage to a tree that's technically on city property, that there's a recourse for doing that. So it's one of those practical things that in writing, it says that, in practicality, it's not quite what it sounds. And actually, I'll just say too about this ordinance and, you know, there's, this ordinance is roughly seven pages long. There's, and this, this ordinance existed, has existed for, this is not new. There's...and this ordinance existed, has existed for...this is not new. This ordinance has existed for a long time. When you go through all the different tweaks that have been made to this, there's essentially two changes to the ordinance that existed before. One is that any tree planted in a public place must be on the approved tree species list, which has been the city's policy already, it's just now the ordinance explicitly says it. So again, in practicality, there's no difference there, it's just that the ordinance adds that language. And then the only other one that, to my knowledge, this may be new, although I suspect our Department of Public Works was doing this already as well, but it's just saying that any trees that are planted or pruned there need to be done in accordance with recommendations to United States Department of Agriculture Tree Owners Manual. Those are your changes to this seven-page ordinance that's existed for a long time. So that's what this amounts to. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too shared some of those concerns. I thought it was pretty crazy to think about getting a misdemeanor for trimming a tree in my right-of-way, but to Councilman Barr's point, and I know there was a lot of discussion with some of my colleagues and our law department about that, you know, from my understanding, again, this is used for the excessive experience where someone's chopping down trees in a park, and so on and so forth. I do also note that these council meetings can be confusing, reading ordinances can be confusing, so just for clarification, if you want to remove a tree on your private property, you're still allowed to. It's your private property, and if you want to cut down a tree on your private property, you can, and you should have that right. But this is more or less pointed towards trees in the right-of-way that are owned by the city and maybe in your backyard if it backs up to a park or public property and whatnot. So I appreciate it, Mr. President.
Thank you. If there's nothing else from the council or the audience, I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote on item number ten.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item ten passes. We'll move on to item eleven, that's a request to amend the solid waste recycling services contract with GFL from the Department of Public Works for a one-year extension from...to be paid for from the Refuge Fund.
So moved.
Support.
We have an approving motion from Ms. Toy with support from Mr. McCullough. Is there any comment from the council? Is there any comment from the audience in regards to item number eleven? I see none. Sam, do you want to address us on this matter?
Yes. I would like to...I'd like to thank you for the consideration, I'd like to thank the mayor and the administration for recognizing our services, and thank you for your consideration for this matter, and I appreciate it.
Most of us know you, but tell everybody else what your name and position is in this capacity.
Sam Caremagnow, Director of Municipal Affairs for GFL Environmental, and I live here in Livonia on Merriman Road.
Thank you, sir, and we thank you for being a good partner as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item number eleven passes. Moving to item twelve, that's an award of bid from the Department of Public Works for the SCADA Design Build Contract Phase One from Budgeted Funds. Can I have a motion, please?
Allow for an approving?
Support.
We have an approving from Mr. McCullough, support from Mr. Donavich. Are there any comments from the council? Seeing none, are there any comments from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on twelve.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item twelve passes. Item thirteen is a request to amend the QBS Engineering Contract with OHM Advisors from the Department of Public Works for the Program Management and Other Things Necessary or Incidental to the Full Performance of...excuse me, I'm getting confused. Let me reread that. Request to amend the QBS Engineering Contract with OHM Advisors from the Department of Public Works for the Program Management and Construction Engineering Services for the SCADA Design Build Contract Phase One, citing Council Resolution three three six dash two one. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
We have an approving motion from Vice President Toy with support from Mr. McCullough. Is there anything from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Council President, just to touch base to, you know, the audience on the SCADA system, this is a huge piece to our stormwater, our sewers, our water service, to provide analytics and reporting and data. Just by doing this is a very proactive approach, and it's going to prevent us from, hopefully, potentially catching issues before they happen. So I'm happy, I applaud the administration for bringing this forward, and this is something good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Anything from the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, take the vote on thirteen, please.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item thirteen passes. We move on to new business. Item fourteen is a request for authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Livonia and Oakland County Incident Management Team, coming to us from the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, to enter into a mutual aid in agreement...a mutual aid agreement with surrounding communities. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
We have a motion from...
Support.
Miss McIntyre with support from Mr. Morgan. Is there anything from the council in regards to item fourteen? I see none. We are joined by Mr. Kahn, formerly Sergeant Kahn, who is our Emergency Management Director. Would you like to tell us what this is about, sir?
Sure. President Jolly and members of council, thank you very much. Glad to be here. Again, Brian Kahn, I'm Director of Emergency Preparedness for the City of Livonia. I come to you tonight just to request authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Oakland County and the Oakland County Incident Management Team. As we all know, the incidents and the disasters events that we've seen have seemed to be increasing over the past several years. Even with the increase in this, it's subject to usually a local jurisdiction or a couple different jurisdictions, but the amount of resources that are needed to get through that type of event are increasing. Incident management teams themselves are not designed to run an incident, they're there to help manage an incident, and are FEMA-based, which is part of the Homeland Security Emergency Preparedness parameters that we file themselves. Oakland County Incident Management Team, although it started in Oakland County, is increasing to a regional Type III type incident management team itself. By entering into this agreement, it will allow the City of Livonia Emergency Management Department to be on the ground floor, for lack of a better term, as this team develops into this regional Southeast Michigan Incident Management Team. Currently, its management team has not only worked in Oakland County, but they worked out county into Wayne County, Macomb County, and up into Saginaw County for various incidents that occur. Like any other specialized teams, there are parameters that go along with this, including time limits, reimbursement costs through FEMA should disasters be declared through that jurisdiction or through the state or presidential declaration itself. Being a part of this also would just allow the Emergency Management Department to get a better experience and better understanding of what is going on, and again, being part of the development and having a say in this. Would also benefit the City of Livonia. Should we have a large event, we would need to have this management-style team come in, this specialized team.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn.
Mr. Chair.
Vice President Toy?
This sounds awesome, and to partner with that community is even better, in many respects, as you pointed out. So I'd like to offer an approving resolution on this, and thank you for all your hard work, Brian, that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Brian, a couple of questions. Reading through this, it's probably covered here, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. From a monetary standpoint, what, if any, financial obligation is there for us in this?
There is no necessary financial obligation outside of, if it were me responding, as part of the team, would be I would be responding under the auspices of Livonia. Should any reimbursement from that local municipality be recovered, which typically occurs, any costs associated with my response would be then reimbursed back to the City of Livonia.
So is that the primary purpose of this, is to provide an entity through which that those reimbursement costs can come from federal grants or whatever?
I guess, well, the primary purpose of it is to manage the team, to have outside resources coming in to assist the incident command itself, help manage it, so making sure every...all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed through FEMA, through a large-scale event, so reimbursement or any other resources, not necessarily monetarily, but any other resources can be obtained through that, and then the reimbursements then be pushed through the state or the federal government.
Okay, so what I'm trying to understand, and I read through all of this, what...I'm trying to just put my finger on what specifically we're authorizing here that we can't do already. And I know you covered a lot of things there, but is it...why do we need council approval for this? Is it to authorize the...whatever expense there is for you and resources from Livonia to assist this team?
Correct. To be authorizing the Department of Emergency Management for the City of Livonia to be part of this incident management team through this memorandum of understanding.
Through which, if there were FEMA reimbursements or whatever?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that for me. I think I read through all this twice, and it's all very well-prepared, don't get me wrong, but I was just trying to understand succinctly what we were being asked to approve, and I think I understand it now. Thank you.
Sir Barr, if I might, just, we had conversations over this. There's no expenditure, so typically when we come to councils, it's over expenditures, but there's a state statute that specifically says when there's a memorandum of understanding with different municipalities, the legislative body has to approve of it. So that's the reason it's here, is because the legislature has determined that they want you folks to make that determination, whether we're spending any money on it or not.
Got it.
Ms. McIntyre?
I will say, I really appreciated the level of specificity in the document outlining examples or conditions under which this would happen, so it doesn't feel just like an amorphous, well, we need the mutual aid, so that was really helpful. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address item number fourteen? I see none. We do have an approving resolution offered by Ms. McIntyre and supported by Mr. Morgan that we started off with. I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote, please.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item fourteen passes. Thank you, Mr. Kahn.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
We appreciate everything you do. Item number fifteen is a request to schedule a Finance and Budget Committee meeting and to establish a public hearing date from the Department of Finance for the annual budget for fiscal year ending November thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move approval.
Support.
We have an approval from McIntyre with support from Mr. Morgan. If there's...is there any comment from the council?
I have a question.
Mr. Barr?
I assume, would this be best for Mr. Zalinsik? Todd, are you the authority on this one? The Whispering Willows?
On sixteen, yes.
Okay, thanks. Through the chair to Mr.?
I think we're on item number fifteenth.
Fifteen.
Sorry.
It's tough up here tonight.
I'm doing what you did, I skipped an item. No wonder Todd was confused.
You're getting hot up there, Mr.?
I appreciate you taking the heat off me, Scott.
It really is. That's even from my committee that I just about skipped over.
Yeah.
You just assumed it was a done deal.
All right, is there anything from the audience in regards to item number fifteen? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Now on to sixteen, a request for additional expenditure from the Engineering Division regarding the M E D C grant for the Greenmead Regional Detention Pond Project Phase One, Whispering Willows In-Line Channel Storage Improvements, citing Council Resolution one two three dash two three. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President, allow for an approving.
Support.
We have an approving from Donavich with support from Morgan. Jumping to the chase here, we'll go right to Mr. Zalinsik. Can you tell us what this is about specifically?
Thank you, Council President and City Councilmembers. First, I'd like to say thanks for your approval previously for this project, and also, obviously, we had some significant rainstorms this July and August, so I'm very pleased that we were able to construct this early on in the springtime for the residents that live along that corridor and along the roadway that was previously probably in August two thousand and fourteen flooded, probably would have flooded if we had not done this project. With that, as you...once you get into the project itself, we had heavy equipment out there, and some of the additional items that were necessary to complete the project was between the Newburg Road culvert thirty-six inch and the pipe arch culvert that was on the hole number seventeen. We aligned the entire area with rip ramp before there was nothing there, once we got the ground cover removed. There was additional fencing required with the gate, and now allows access for future maintenance of that location that was not thought of previously. The biggest thing is probably allowing for irrigation. When we started this project, there was twenty days of no rain, and they kept moving the hoses in order to get it water, whatever, but at some point in time for the future maintenance of that course, it was at best to have D and B come in and provide that irrigation of eight hundred milliliter feet of two-inch main with the coordination with the golf course. So that was at a cost of thirty-nine thousand seven eighty-eight. The majority of the work, again, was related to fencing, additional asphalt undercuts. So at the end, if you go out there, you'll see that there's been a significant change in the golf course in that corridor, cutting down the trees. We are hopeful to plant some trees on the south side of the location, but asking for your approval in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand two oh eight forty-six to solely underground LLC. In addition, pay Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark for the additional inspection that occurred to complete this project in the amount of seventeen thousand, making the total not to exceed thirty-eight thousand. Addition to have asphalt drawings for future maintenance for the golf course in DPW in the amount of five thousand HRC. And finally, waive the Code of Ordinances for D and B, who's done a lot of work in the city, along our right-ways at Farmington Road and along Five Mile in the amount of thirty-nine thousand seventy-eighty-eight. So again, thank you for your assistance, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I think Mr. Donavich indicated first. We're going to go over to him, and then we'll go to Mr. Barr.
Mr. President, I think technically Mr. Barr was first.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Zalinsik, for that information. I went out there myself during the construction and after, and quite an improvement over there. From your understanding, with some of these rains we've had since this construction's been completed, a lot of those water issues that were there before have been pretty much solved?
Now with the expanded area of detention, we've taken out the bridge, we have a nice new cart path, it's been a godsend to have that additional storage capacity to have that along that corridor along those residents, so yes.
Yeah, I will say, solely construction did phenomenal work out there, and again, I'd ask you to go out there and check it out if you have been by there before, and it looks different, but I think it was definitely needed for those residents because they were experiencing really heavy flooding beforehand.[1646.19] And my last question is, what other projects are we pinpointing similar to this that we've done? I know there were some other water issues in the community. Do you have anything else coming up similar to this project or you're not sure yet?
Nothing at this time, other than you'll see the next council meeting, the Denmark Drain Project additionally, we had some additional overruns on that because of the extreme rain that fell at Ben that took place in July and August recently, but I'll look forward to getting to City Council. But we have utilized the funding that was given to us to improve two great locations. We were hoping for the third, but unfortunately it didn't pan out, but we'll continue to monitor that and if there's additional locations, work to find funding and solutions to help out this community and residents that may be impacted by that.
Good work, Mr. Zalinsik. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Barr?
First of all, in my defense, I just realized I'm looking at an electronic packet here that I downloaded before the agenda was adjusted, so that's why I made the mistake I was. I was on the next item on my file, but, two questions. Todd, what, what percentage, if any, of this, this additional funding will be reimbursed by that MEDC grant? Will any of it?
The entire amount, whatever will be reimbursed. We, we were given $1 million to spend. I will spend up to, I think I checked the last part of the balance, 62 cents, I'll be short of all of $1 million, so.
Okay.
We'll find a way to spend that maybe.
You know, with that answer, I'll withhold my second question. Thanks.
Mr. Zalinsik, thank you for taking the lead on this. This is something that we have heard about a lot over the last year and a half or so from the residents who lived to the south of this project. Is there any additional water retention work that's going to take place on the Greenmead property on the other side of Newburg?
I was hoping to have some additional funds, but in the future, we would like to maybe look at the potential where the United States Postal Service parking lot is at. There is an area to the south of the soccer fields that we would like to try to maybe make a fore bay in the future, whether maybe with DPW crews, but have an area for water to facilitate, to be detained before it transfers into the adjacent property. They have a lot of woody debris that may, along the fence line, collect there. So the opportunity was to do some future work, but that'll be as part of HRC's master plan to show us what can be done in the future if and when funding does come available to do that portion. But you are correct, our goal is to continue on, on the other side in the future when funding and the projects may dictate that.
Okay. And I appreciate that update and I think it's important to put that out there because initially when we talked about this, I think we kind of, in some ways, understood it to be all one project. This is, the bulk of it is done, but there was another aspect that we're looking to do in the future as well.
That's a good point and, again, we will keep it on the radar and eventually hopefully look for future funding opportunities and appreciate, again, the mayor and the legislators coming to us to help us assist in this manner to attack these, these issues.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your leadership.
Mr. Jolly?
Ms. McIntyre?
I'd just like to mention that when residents feel that they're never heard and that the council's never able to take action on issues and sometimes we get issues and problems that, that we are beyond our scope, beyond the money we have, beyond our purview, we don't have the legal authority to do it. This is an example of an issue that started with residents coming to us, making us aware of some very significant fun, flooding issues. And we were, and it was due in part to the fact they were adjacent to city property, to a golf course and working with Mr. Zalinsik, who got to work on this issue and looked for funding opportunities. We were able to, to put in a retent, retention pond.
Detention.
Detention pond.
Where the bad water goes.
I know. One of these days I'll get it right. But anyway, this was really a significant improvement. It was a major project. You're getting an idea tonight of the scope and the cost, but this started because of resident, issues that residents had and they put the information together and they came to us and we were able to address it. So we are sometimes able to tackle these significant issues and we always do our best to do it, but I think this is a great example of, and how our department heads and administration and the council work together to accomplish things for the residents. So thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. I know it's been said tonight, but thank you for your leadership and your bird-dogging this throughout the whole process and the contractors too have been great, so thank you.
Full team effort, yes.
Is there any comments on item 16 from the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 16 passes. Onto 17. That's a request for authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Livonia and the Growth Works from the Department of Law to provide improved services for the youth assistant diversion program commencing on September 1st of 2023.
So moved.
Support.
We're going to give that to Mr. Barr. Motion by Vice President Toy and motion support from Mr. Barr. Paul, I, this is coming from your department, but I see somebody else approaching the podium up here. Come on up here to the front. Good evening, sir. What's your name, please?
Hi, my name is Nick Rizold. I'm the CEO of Growth Works.
Okay. Can you tell us exactly any pertinent information about this memorandum of understanding between Growth Works and the City of Livonia?
Sure. Maybe just explain it and maybe from our point of view as Growth Works. We enter into these memorandums with the different policing agencies in the Conference of Western Wayne and it really just sets the, the table for what offenses are eligible for diversion programming directly referred from the police department. It just talks about the way those things work. The program is funded by the Conference of Western Wayne, receives allocation from County of Wayne to provide these services, so that's how in the end we're reimbursed for the work that we do. This is more about setting the rules of the road. We found that that helps and it's helped in the case of the City of Livonia and others to create more referral opportunities for eligible youth to get into these services. And when they, when they go through this process, they actually get to skip, the complaint often is not actually even filed down in the Juvenile Division of the Third Circuit Court, which means if they complete the diversion program successfully, there's literally nothing on their record, there's nothing to expunge later, there's nothing to do about that. They get to kind of move on hopefully with a mistake and a lesson learned. Some of us have had to do that ourselves when we were younger and, and it provides a great opportunity for that. So I just wanted to be available to answer any questions that you may have on behalf of Growth Works.
Thank you very much, sir. And Mayor Brosnan, would you like to speak on this matter?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just by way of background for the council, some of you may recall that this was actually a program that we switched over to Growth Works back in 2021. Prior to that, it was managed within our own department. We had a full-time person assigned to trying to work with Livonia families along this lines and they were housed in our Community Resources Department. The value of switching that work over to Growth Works has been unbelievable, primarily because the contract is now overseen by the police department, which is where we find most of our points of entry at into the program. So there's a much better alliance between families in need and the people that are out there on the front line seeing where those needs exist at. So we're especially encouraged about the vitality of this program because it has that, that amazing connection. The fact that we're able to service more Livonia families with this program is probably, though, its single biggest strength. And taking those Conference of Western Wayne dollars and moving them over makes it a program that is no longer operated out of our general fund. So this is one of those programs that really is a win all the way around. We monitor it closely. We meet every year, the police department, my office, and our friends at Growth Works to talk about where we are seeing families entering the program at, where are they getting assistance at? Is it working? Are the diversion programs working? So we're always asking ourselves that question. Is it the best way to help kids in our, in our community? And so far, it's proven to be that case. Before you tonight, I believe you have a contract now that will afford us the opportunity to continue this operation on an ongoing basis until we decide that as a city, perhaps it's not working for us one day. And, and we think that that's beneficial. We've been through a testing period now for the past couple of years with the program, clearly seen an indication that it's making a difference for kids and families in Livonia and I would be really grateful for your support of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the council? Is there any additional comment from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on 17.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item 17 passes and that concludes our agenda for the regular meeting this evening. We will go back to the audience for any non-agenda comments and addresses to the council.